Commissioner's Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on December the 6th, 2022, 10:00 a.m. The Commissioner's courtroom in County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the notification of pledge allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag. Commissioner Aldridge will lead us.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for all the days and all the blessings that you continue to bestow upon us. Ask that as we deliberate on issues important to the citizens of Brazos County, that you give us your wisdom, your insight and perspective, and that we act according to your will. Always continue to look after and provide for those who provide our freedoms and liberties. I ask all these things in your almighty name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. The second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns, and we have one, Dixie Bowlin.
I'm the mother of Larry Bowlin. He's incarcerated at Brazos County Jail, has been since 4/8, excuse me, 21. He was involved in the Kentmore Cabinet incident. It's a very corrupt case. I've spoke, this is my fourth time speaking. He had a status hearing last Tuesday where Judge Kyle Hawthorne railroaded him, as well as attorney Craig Graves. He has fired all three of his attorneys, but the judge is refusing to take them off his case. Totally corrupt, totally fraud. The case was not recorded at all. My husband Dwight Bowlin is his lawful counsel. You have the right to have a lawful counsel according to our Constitution. You never have to hire an attorney for any case. Attorney Craig Graves would not step to the side and let my husband stand beside him, nor would Judge Kyle Hawthorne. Totally corrupt. DA Parsons is still refusing to give any information according to the discovery to our son or my husband, my son's lawful counsel. He said he will only pass it on to an attorney. Totally corrupt. Constitution, you can have a lawful counsel to represent you, and they are to be treated and respected as an attorney and given information according to your case. Our son has not even heard hardly anything about his case or seen any pictures. Totally corrupt. Another individual by the name of Nathan Watts from our hometown of Iola, a very small town, working at a different Kentmore Cabinets in Texas, unfortunately lost his life in 2020. They actually killed him. It was a cover-up. The family knows it was a cover-up. It's an MS-13 gang. That is who was against my son on 4/8/21. Timothy Jackson Smith was no angel. He was the leader of an MS-13 gang at Kentmore Cabinets. Law enforcement, attorneys, judges, everyone are aware of this. They are totally denying my son his right to court. They want to say he's mentally incompetent. He is not mentally incompetent in any way. He has been at Brazos County Jail under Sheriff Dickey for 20 months with no problems. I am ex-corrections myself. I have 16 and a half years in corrections, my husband 14. I have worked with mentally incompetent, totally mentally ill people. You don't go a day without problems with those type of people. He is mentally competent, and he should and deserves his day in court like anyone else. They are trying to deny him that. He has a mentally hearing on December the 13th, and they have a jury, and naturally they're going to try to railroad him and say he's mentally incompetent. I'm doing my best to fight this, as well as my husband. Totally corrupt. Everyone involved in this case knows this is corrupt. We have spoken to many people, and since of the big railroad thing last Tuesday, we have now opened a full investigation on you, Sheriff Wayne Dickey, many other agencies here in Brazos County, Texas. We do believe this goes way up the ladder. On 4/8/21, there was eight shootings that week, two on that day on 4/8/21. Two shootings. The shooting at Kentmore Cabinets was the second shooting that day. Unfortunately, our government is setting a pattern. They're starting to do it where there's many shootings within a week's span. It's not by chance, common sense. We all have to use common sense. It's part of taking of the guns. They came into our home, even though there was no crime committed in our home, took all of our guns, ammo, belts, everything, went down 4.2 miles from our house and took stuff from our son's home.
Your time's up. Thank you.
Look up David Straight, American National. He will teach you a lot. Write me at P.O. Box 63.
And consider and take action on Agenda Items 3 through 25.
And you all.
I'm sorry, I'll have to ask you to go. Your time is up. I will ask you to be removed if you don't leave. Okay, thank you. Consider and take action on Agenda Items 3 through 25. Number three is approval of the following reappointments to the Brazos Valley Groundwater Conservation District.
I'd like to approve A and B. Second.
Motion made. Seconded in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number four is approval of the appointment of Wayne Dickey to the Brazos Valley Veterans Memorial Board. Term of appointment is January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2025.
Move to approve.
Motion made. Seconded in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries.
May I say what an honor it has been for me to serve on that board, and I know you'll be a welcome addition. Thank you. God bless you.
And while we're on the subject of our sheriff, I would like to also, because I've forgotten to do so in previous Commissioner's Court meetings, congratulate him on becoming a class member of the new Leadership 254 class offered by Texas Association of Counties. So glad to have you representing Brazos County. Thank you.
Let's see, we've had the vote on that. Five is considering an approved recommendation from the Brazos County Public Defender's Advisory Board to appoint Nathan T. Wood as Chief of the Brazos County Public Defender Office effective December 24, 2022.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made. Seconded in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number six is discussion of possible action on creating the Brazos County Veterans Court Advisory Committee to evaluate, seek funding for and establish a Brazos County Veterans Court. And the members that have been suggested are Commissioner Russ Ford, Commissioner Steve Aldridge, County Attorney Earl Gray, Bill Yonkin, and Bruce Arret.
May I approve?
Second.
I would like to speak against this in that we have many other intricate parts of Brazos County that needs to take a part in this. As I noticed the list, it's two commissioners. I would think all commissioners of Brazos County should be involved because it's going to be a budget item. It's going to be a major change. I'm speaking against the committee. I am not speaking against forming the Veterans Advisory Committee or the Veterans Advisory. I think we have a court that we're looking at. I'm not speaking against that, but because of no new revenue, one of the things we have to do is make sure we have that expense in our budget, and we haven't done that. I understand that grants are available, and that's wonderful. We would like for you to apply for the grants for Brazos County because that would be helpful. But we have no prosecutors on this committee. That's important. That's an important element in this decision. We have Pat Patterson, who is our Veteran Service Administrator. He's not on this committee, and he needs to be. And again, I will reiterate that every commissioner and judge on this Commissioner's Court should be involved in this development. It is not to be taken lightly, and it's not for the publicity seekers. This is a serious situation, and we need to take it and handle it in that way.
Commissioner, if I understand you correctly, you do not have a problem with seeking funding, evaluating, seeking funding and establishing the Veterans Court. You just don't like the committee that's been proposed. Is that correct?
Not just don't like. I'm going to say it's not even necessary. This Commissioner's Court is the body that will decide and should decide, and in deciding, we will use all the resources we have. Pat Patterson is our Veterans Service Administrator. The prosecutors should be involved because this will affect our courts. So we don't want to just haphazardly put things together. I would like to make sure we start off on a good foot, that we're dotting our Ts and crossing our Is. There are so many things that need to be taken care of before even a committee. The Commissioner's Court as a whole need to decide if this is the way we're going.
Well, and in regard to the committee, I mean, you know, we've got like adult probation. Who would be administering the, if we're set up, I mean, I'm sure y'all are aware, we have a specialty court currently. There's a program set up for, very similar to what the veteran court could actually do, but adult probation is the one that administers that thing. So it would impact, this is more than just, you know, a court. There's others that would be impacted because probation department is the one that would actually be doing the administration of a rehab for, whether it's veterans. They currently do it under the specialty court. So there's, I think it's a bigger issue and maybe premature to create a committee to study it. I mean, really, it's a feasibility study, and I think the ones that are actually involved, that would be involved in a future Veterans Court if one were created, those really need to have say-so in those discussions, in my opinion.
Judge, I would like to add that for the last two years I've served, and this has been an issue that has been discussed numerous times, we've taken no action on it whatsoever. And Commissioner Colley, I'm going off the Commissioner's Court, which is part of the reason that I put my name on there. I'm willing to serve, however, it's not necessary that I serve. If you've got another person, I would ask that we amend this motion in such a way to satisfy that need. But what I would like to say is that the need for a Veterans Court in Brazos County, I think, is, it is a very necessary thing. I have a personal experience with a veteran that came back home from Afghanistan. He lived with us for a while. I did not understand that if you witness death of your fellow soldiers, that it has a long-term effect. It affects your sleep patterns. It affects everything.
It affects everything.
And what I will tell you is that I know of no other court that we have in Brazos County that has people that are advisors that have experienced that type of situation, that type of trauma. And I will tell you, what I found out from my nephew is you do not want to be declared PTSD. That is a big problem to you for the rest of your life. You lose some of your liberties and some of your rights under the Constitution. So it is important that we deal with veterans in a different way than we deal with average citizens or a specialty court. This is extremely important, Commissioner, and what I'll tell you is we have an opportunity to form a committee to seek funding. The biggest and probably the best argument that I've heard against this in the past was how are we going to fund it, particularly with the no new revenue budget that we adopted this year. The point is, there's money available. You and I both know, we've been told that there's money available. So if we have a committee that's working on behalf of the Commissioner's Court and reporting back to the Commissioner's Court that's seeking funding for a Veterans Court, I personally don't want this thing to cost the citizens of Brazos County one penny. I want to get every single bit of it funded through grants.
Commissioner Ford, I can appreciate everything you said, and I want to make sure that my statement is clear. I am in favor of a Veterans Court. That has been discussed, as you said, with many parties, a lot of our Brazos County resources, but it's more than work for a committee. The Commissioner's Court should decide if we are going to do it, and if we're going to do it, how we're going to do it. Now, in regards to the grant that's out there, I would strongly encourage the administrator to apply for the grant, do whatever it is that needs to be done with Brazos County's support. I believe you have the support of the commissioners, but we're not at a point that we're going to pass this over to a committee when the Commissioner's Court itself has not made the formal decision nor have taken actions to support it. We have to do that, and a committee is premature, Mr. Ross.
Commissioner, who is the administrator that you would recommend that applies for these grants?
The young lady, tell me your name.
Tiffany Love.
Tiffany Love.
Tiffany doesn't work for us, Commissioner.
You're right.
We might even show her any support.
Would you stand, Tiffany? And I'm going to ask you to testify because I have some questions for you. Some people are not involved with, have not been involved with your organization, and I'd like you to introduce yourself and tell us how you plan to assist us. Do you mind?
May I speak?
Yes.
Judge, Commissioners, so we are gone beyond the agenda item for the appointment of a committee.
But we're discussing.
We're discussing the formation of a Veterans Court, and that is not on the agenda for this morning.
But this information, Bruce, is important to the discussion. That's all I'm saying.
I understand, but the agenda item is for formation of a committee.
Then my vote is not to form a committee, but I'd like to introduce.
I don't think we've voted yet.
Okay.
And I really, I am really displeased with the Commissioner wishing to sharp angle close the discussion on this before I've had an opportunity to speak.
Can I make one more statement, please? So if I am on this committee, it needs to be as a non-voting member, because if I am a voting member, then I can't provide legal advice to the committee, which is how I normally serve on a committee. So I would request that I not be listed as a voting member, which would mean that probably a fifth actual member, voting member, would need to be in my place. But I would ask you not to make me a voting member of this committee. Let me serve as I normally do as a council.
I don't necessarily see that there's anything that this committee's going to vote on. The committee's purpose is for an exploratory purpose. I've been a Commissioner for six years now, and we've discussed a Veterans Court on and off. It's had its fits and starts, and we've all come to a consensus, I think, that this is something that needs to be explored, and that's all this is to do. This committee would have no authority whatsoever to commit Brazos County to any type of relationship that would incur any type of cost involved. And the reason that this is on the agenda is to get the discussion and creation of the possible creation of a Veterans Court underway, as opposed to it moving along and then just kind of disappearing somewhere, which you all know in having conversations with people in our community who are attorneys, who are judges, who are prosecutors, that this just has a tendency to get talked about and talked about and talked about, but there's no action. And the reason for this, Commissioner, I allow you to speak. I would appreciate the same courtesy.
Please speak.
Thank you. I would, I think that it makes a lot of sense, living in a community such as we do, to put a significant effort. If you don't like the committee, then amend the people with a motion that you would want to have on this committee to be included. This was just a, this was to get it on the agenda, to get it going, to where, as opposed to it just being conversations individually with people as members of this court, to have a real function on taking action to explore it. So I don't have to be on this committee. Mr. Ford doesn't have to be on this committee. I think Earl Gray is because, would be a good one, because I think, you know, he, that most of the types of cases that are dealt with are not cases that are felonies.
May I speak?
And that would be there. So I, you know, if we need to hear from him or whatever. But I think we need to have something that's formal, living in a community that we live in, that holds itself up as a veteran-friendly community.
May I speak?
That we're a little disingenuous if we just talk about and talk about and talk about these things and take no action. So this is a step of action to get a commitment. If we come back and decide, no, we're not going to do this, then we've made that type of statement to the people who are veterans who live in our community.
May I speak to your comment?
Please.
The way that this court, this body formally takes a matter into serious consideration is that we have what we call a workshop. At that time, all the parties, Ms. Tiffany Love, and prosecutors and judges and anybody that wants to speak on this comes before the Commissioner's Court, and we discuss it, and we can take possible action after that. It is true. We are sensitive to veterans. As one of my things in tenure here is I've dedicated myself to working and supporting veterans. Speaking against this committee is not speaking against developing a Commissioner's Court. It's the process, and there are processes that have been established way before six years' tenure. So I'm just asking that we not waste the court's time with the committee. We may, and I will ask, that we form a workshop for the discussion and hopefully possible action. That's how we have done it in the past.
But that's not on the agenda.
It is not, and I'm going to ask it to be placed on the agenda.
Can we get our four minutes to speak also? I believe so.
No, you need to hold up until you're recognized.
I'm listening to some stuff that's not true.
I'm listening to some stuff that's not true, and I would really like to put, as a veteran, I would like to put my, we'll say, four minutes in also.
So I took the opportunity to take a look at the veterans who are on probation currently. And it looks like there are, some were above forty total that are on probation right now. And it looked to me like that maybe close to half were felons and half were misdemeanors. And when I looked at the charges, the most prominent-looking charges that I saw in the misdemeanor side was DWI .15, which is twice the legal limit, and assault, family violence. Those were the charges that I saw, like, reoccurring in there. So, and I will tell you that when you look at the law, when you look at what the law says, the prosecutor has to approve and allow a person to go to a Veterans Court. So when I look at those forty-something folks who are on probation currently, I don't have any idea whether the prosecutor or the court would have allowed any of those to be in a Veterans Court. We don't know that. So whatever that number is, and it doesn't look like it's a significant number with currently what's on probation, is it, is it correct?
I gotta interrupt you.
Well, you hold up now.
I gotta interrupt you, Judge.
No, you can't, you let me speak.
One person who would lay down his life on my behalf is worth it. I don't care how many.
Yeah. So, that's incorrect. We all appreciate vets, and we appreciate what we do, but if you look at that law, the first portion of that law says that if you're, if you have a brain injury, if you're injured in combat, you have PTSD, you have all those things, then you may qualify, provided the prosecutor allows it to happen. The second portion of that thing opens it up to pretty much anybody who's a veteran. And I appreciate everything that veterans do, but just because you're a veteran shouldn't give you a get out of jail free card just because you're a veteran. And here's the example that I've used in the past, and it happened here in Brazos County, and Jarvis in his office with prosecutors on it. We had a veteran who killed his ex-girlfriend and her brother, and who claimed in trial PTSD was the reason for it. And Jarvis and his staff proved to a jury that all that was going on prior to him ever being in the service. And successfully was prosecuted, and I believe may have even got the death penalty on the thing. So I'm telling you that just because you serve in the service doesn't give you a free rein to go out and kill people or commit crimes. But that was his defense. So I don't, I don't mind taking a look at it.
I don't think that's even what I'm talking, what we're talking about.
Excuse me?
Okay, you're not talking about it, 'cause that's not what you want to hear.
I'd like to say something.
That's totally subjective.
Commissioner, if I, I haven't had a chance to speak, and I'd like to. I appreciate veterans. They do for us what no other group of people do. They protect our freedom.
Yes.
They deserve every consideration. But the matter before us today is possible action on creating a committee. I think we need a workshop on this where all of us are there, and so I agree with Commissioner Colley that this is not the time to form a committee. We need a workshop on it where all of us can participate. I'd like to hear from Pat Patterson, our Veterans Affairs Services Director. I'd also like to hear from Earl Gray and Jarvis Parsons when we have this workshop. And Ms. Love, come back, and the veterans that are here to come back, and we have a full and open discussion. So I'm gonna vote against the creation of this committee and in favor of when it comes to a future agenda item, putting on a workshop.
So we don't need to speak today? Because we were supposed to have four minutes to explain why-
You have four minutes in the public? We can allow or not someone to come up to, and it's not actually four minutes in the agenda items. I'll give you the opportunity, if you wanna, if you want to-
I appreciate it. I love just four minutes. Okay, this is the young lady that created the Veterans Court in Waco.
Sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Introduce yourself, also.
My name is Patrick Babatia. I work for MVPN. We fall under the Texas Veteran Commission. I've been counseling the jails for years, getting back in there. Anyway, to make a long story short on this, I don't understand, like, sometimes when I come in here, what's even happening when y'all say what you say, because, I've met, we've met with you three times, and you were talking about a resolution to get this thing going. And I called all our surrounding county service officers, and Pat Patterson is the only one against it. And y'all think he's like some, like, how are you a service officer, but you're taking services away from veterans? This is not a second chance. What this is, is a second chance at life. It is forcing a veteran that we can prove has issues like PTSD, TBI. It's forcing them into rehabilitation. The first phase is cleanup. Even if you save one life a year, is it not worth it? We're not asking you for money. These guys are seriously just trying to help us get started. And it just so happens, oh, guess what? Since we've been talking to y'all now for nine months, here this month, oh, we missed our second grant session. Y'all aren't even writing the grants, we are. Just let us get the money and start it. I don't know what the, Pat Patterson's not even involved in Veterans Court, and he's taking services away. You know why? Because when that veteran does get incarcerated for sixty days, he loses his benefits. All I'm asking you is a chance to get this started, to save some lives, man, to help veterans, to just get back right. It's no money to the Brazos Valley. You'll make money. The surrounding counties wanna be involved. We can be the leader in this, or someone else is. I'm telling you, and I don't know, why is it this hard? These men are just trying to help people. It shouldn't be this hard.
May I?
I run support groups, and y'all have no idea how every day some of these guys are teeter-totting on doing, they're numbing their bodies with drugs and alcohol. That's what we're pulling out of them. We're not going to get thugs and giving them a second chance. God, I don't know why.
It's like no one wants to-
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
By the way, I love Wayne Dickie, he's awesome.
We love him.
Yeah.
We love him.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Love, and I work at the VA. I have been a part of building a Vet Court from this stage in Waco. And to be honest, all of you have valid and accurate points. The people at the table do need to be your judicial partners. Probation does need to have a seat at the table. However, it's also important to take action and decide on who's going to go forward. Without the right people at the table, we can talk about this forever, but it doesn't make any change for our veterans. And so probation needs to be at the table. Your district attorney needs to be at the table. There needs to be a judge willing to oversee a Veterans Court at the table. In other areas, your role is to give the permission to say, yes, we support you figuring out how to make this work. And the reality is that you get to take the credit when it looks great in your community, and you get the credit for bringing in a national best practice. But the people who are implementing it every day are the people who need to be a part of the committee.
Exactly.
I agree.
Assuming we were to go ahead forward with this, how long is the grant funds for?
It depends. There's a number of grant cycles. Waco in May wrote for a four-year grant. Actually, yesterday, a grant through TVC that's an annual grant ended, and so it depends on what your county wants to apply for. If you don't want to use the VA, the VA does not own the service. You can get grant funding to have veterans go to community partners. And so once your committee, or your workshop, or whomever the powers that be decide how you want your Vet Court to run, you write grants according to meet those needs.
Okay.
Thank you.
And it's my understanding, Ms. Love, that you volunteer to help us write, if we decide, help us write these grants. Although you're not an employee of Brazos County, your services extends itself to that service. Is that correct?
That is true. I'm willing to help in any way that I can. As an official VA employee, I cannot be the person to push the mitt on the grant. That has to come from somebody employed at your office, but I'm willing to help in any way that I can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to call the question on the committee.
Okay. Question's been called. All in favor to create the committee listed to evaluate, seek funding, and establish Brazos County Veterans Court? Raise your right hand.
Your Honor, can I say one thing? Can I speak?
Opposed? Raise your right hand.
I didn't vote.
Okay, sir, are you abstaining?
Are you abstaining?
I know.
You didn't vote.
Very nice. I, you know, whether we establish a committee, have a workshop, and the result of that workshop creates a appropriate committee that all five of us can agree upon, this, we need to take an action to get this process underway, because it's been talked about and talked about and talked about, and it never happened. So you're gonna go, I guess we go down, go down three-two.
Okay. There you go. Y'all got that?
We go down three-two. And if you don't like the committee, you know, I would entertain the judge or any of the other Commissioners to, the idea behind this committee was just to start this out at something that was simple. If it needed to grow, it wouldn't constitute a quorum, so it wouldn't violate the Open Meetings Act. But I would challenge each of the other members of the Commissioners' Court to come up with a committee that they would suggest.
Judge, may-
We need to take action.
Judge, if you will, the agenda item does call for possible action.
We just took it.
And I'm gonna ask, with regards to that, Bruce, we form and call a workshop-
Well-
In the very near future-
That being future agenda items.
As a future agenda item where we can discuss and make the decisions, or have the input that we need to have.
Future agenda items would be the appropriate.
Yeah.
That would be item number thirty-one on our list.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And to answer the gentleman from the audience, since it's already been voted on, but there is an opportunity to speak at the conclusion of Commissioners' Court today, if he wishes to speak.
Right.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to number seven.
You'll be able to speak at the end of the meeting.
At the end of the meeting, please speak.
Number seven is approval to change the regular meeting day for Commissioners' Court from Tuesday, December twenty-second, twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, to Wednesday, December the twenty-eighth, due to the observation of the Christmas holidays.
Move approval second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number eight is approval of engagement letter with West Webb, Albretton Gentry, PC, for intergovernmental transfer of real estate for the site of Brazos County Medical Examiner's Office.
Move approval second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number nine is approval of public official bonds.
Move approval second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number ten is request approved for the FY twenty-twenty-two Budget Amendments, fifty-four point zero four, correcting the fund source from General Permanent Improvement Fund, forty-five-hundred to General Fund, thousand.
What, approval, I mean, I move to approve.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number eleven is approval to sell respiratory equipment and detecting equipment to City of Bryan Fire Department for a total of a dollar pursuant to Local Government Code two sixty-three point one fifty-two. These items are no longer in use.
Move approval second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number twelve is approval to amend the purchasing policy to add categories of expense that can be paid by the payment authorization to include conference and seminar fees and utilities.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number thirteen is approval of change order number four, CIP twenty-five-eighty, kitchen, jail kitchen expansion in the amount of seventy-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars for additional work and days. New contract amount will be four million five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and three hundred and eighty-three, four million five hundred and ninety-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Move approval.
Second. We have a gentleman who wanted to speak on this.
Yes.
And we have a gentleman.
Yes. Jay Haskins.
I'm Jay Haskin. My background is heavy construction. That's been pretty much my life. A big part of that has been projects that were in trouble and solving them. I'm concerned about thirteen in two regards. One, normally, five percent of a base cost would be acceptable as extras. Beyond that, you start looking at what causes this problem. Beyond ten percent, you start chewing people up. So I really would like to see this committee take an action to find out what has caused all of this extra. You're at sixteen point four eight percent right now over base cost. And that amount of money would fund the Commissioners' Court for a year or more. So it looks to me like finding the cause, it may be something that's preventable, it may be something that was overlooked, but to make sure that it's really reviewed and looked at before you start giving it more money. That, it would just be prudent. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know whether, I mean, whether Fred, Charles, somebody might want to address some of the-
Howdy, Judges and Commissioners. So on this change order, there's four items, basically. Fred Payne, Brazos County Operations Manager. There's four items that range in price. The smallest item is some bollards that'd go around a piece of equipment to keep hand trucks from running into it and causing damage. There's some intercoms that needed to be installed between a roll-up door, and then there's water heaters that were existing that have been replaced, but the plans had missed getting the existing ones that need to be demoed out to be removed, so that's another item. And the biggest ticket item is an electrical panel. The one that was there is too small to serve a booster heater pump, so they needed a larger electrical panel with circuitry, and then to run a line in a route that wouldn't conflict with other building codes to this booster heater. So those are the four items that this would cover. So statutorily, two-six-two of the Local Government Code says that we cannot approve a change order in excess of twenty-five percent of the original contract value. We've done the math, we're below that. If we don't do these items, which is entirely an option, but like the booster heater for the dishwasher, that remains an issue that we're gonna have to do at some point. It's not something that we can, it's not, we're not adding, we're not doing anything fancy, adding extra aesthetic pieces.
Okay. Mr. Haskins, you want to speak again?
You have one minute.
My question is, why weren't these items included originally? That would be prudent.
And it would be. Unfortunately, we have, it's a good point, but we have humans involved in the process, and we are an imperfect being, and we-
And we try to go through and vet and check this stuff and QC it the best we can, but there's things that we miss, that the architect missed, the engineers missed, and so forth. So we have this process for exactly that, to address issues that may have been missed. And we will be addressing it with the design folks before we finish paying that amount.
Okay. Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
I don't believe we've taken a vote yet, have we? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 14 is approval to renew bid 23-083R for heavy equipment rental with Mustang Rental Services Texas LLC.
Move approval, second.
Motion made, second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15 is approval of contract 23-091 for secure short-term detention with Gonzalez County.
Move approval, second.
Motion made, second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 16 is approval of service contract CIP 23-533B for shower replacement at Brazos County Detention Center with Noah Detention Construction in the amount of $18,758.
Move approval, second.
Motion made, second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 17 is approval of service contract 23-563 HVAC Control Replacement for administrative, administration building with hunting services.
Move approval, second.
Motion made, second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 18 is approval of service contract 23-566, 23-567 HVAC Control Replacement for courthouse with hunting services.
Move approval, second.
Motion made, second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 19 is approval of order exempting contract 23-569 with Allensworth and Porter LLP for legal services for competitive bidding pursuant to the Local Government Code 262.024A7.
Move approval, second.
Motion made, second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 20 is considering take action on Wixon Creek SUD Utility Permit to install a road, road bore under Orlaugh Road located 2,120 feet southwest of Carava Road. Site's located in Precinct 2.
Move approval, second.
Motion made, second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 21 is approval of final plat of River Bend Subdivision Block 1, Lots 1, 2, and 3, 11.32 acres, Stephen Jones League Survey Abstract 27, City of College Station ETJ, Brazos County, Texas. Site's located in Precinct 4.
Move to approve, second.
Motion made, second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 22 is Commissioners Court Minutes for the following dates.
Move approval, A through F.
Second.
Motion made, second to approve A through F, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 23 is budget amendments. Budget amendments FY 21/22, budget amendments 55.01, and FY 22/23, budget amendments 9.01 through 9.02.
Move approval, second.
Motion made, second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries.
24.
I don't think that was it. Here it is.
These are the budget amendments.
22, I think.
24.
24 is personnel change status.
Move approval, A and B, second.
Motion made, second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 25 is payment of claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 811-9222 through claim number 811-9320, and claim number 9006364 through claim number 9006404.
Move approval, second.
Motion made, second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 26 is acknowledgement of Brazos County FY 2023 adopted budget. 27 is acknowledgement of fiscal year 2023 through 2027 capital improvement program. 28 is an acknowledgement of FY 2022, 23, budget to actuarials by fund as of November 30, 2022, and acknowledgement of FY 22, 23 contingency budget to actuarials by funds as of November 30, 2022. And 29 is juvenile director's report. Linda's not here this morning, so we had 43 juveniles. 38 were males, five were females, and 24 were on electronic monitor. And number 30, Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population, Sheriff.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner. 670 this morning, 583 men, 87 women, 62 on electronic monitoring.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. 31 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
And please put the workshop on a future agenda as soon as possible.
Okay.
I would also include that you.
I'll give it to Ms. Anderson and get that scheduled.
Excuse me. I would also include inviting Ms. Tiffany Love and any and all personnel, resources that are interested in this matter.
Including District Attorney and County Attorney and, and Pat Patterson?
Yes, indeed. Adult probation, everything mentioned earlier. Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all. 32 is call for citizens' input and our concerns.
Judge, Health District asked me to come up here on their behalf. They have 10,000 free rapid COVID-19 at-home tests that they are going to be giving away tomorrow here in the admin building. It's going to be in the atrium. It'll, it's available to the public and to all county employees. So they'll be here tomorrow in the atrium from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., so put it on your calendar.
May I ask, has there been any improvement on the accuracy? Do you, have you any information with regards to that?
I do not, Commissioner. The Health District hopefully would have that. They just contacted me this morning, right before court, and asked if I could get up here and announce the free COVID tests.
And we thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I'm concerned with the, you know, even having the test and not getting the correct results.
Good morning, Your Honors.
Good morning.
Thank you for this time. My name is Erin Willhite, and I'm here representing the National Ornithological Illness Brazos Valley as President. I am also here representing the veterans as a U.S. Air Force enlisted chick. And I served as a psychiatric technician at David Grant Medical Center, which served the Western Rim, which served the Pacific Rim. I served during the Cold War. I then served on the Alcohol Rehabilitation Unit there at David Grant Medical Center before going to Ellington, returning to Texas and going to Ellington Air Force Base where I served as a Public Affairs NCO. I speak today on the subject of establishing a Veterans Court in Brazos Valley. President Abraham Lincoln once stated, "Honor to the soldier and sailor everywhere who bravely bears his country's cause. Honor also to the citizen who cares for his brother in the field and serves as he best can the same cause." Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
The quote by President Lincoln reminds us that supporting our veterans is not just a veterans' issue. It is an issue that goes to the heart of American citizenship and the honor that we carry as American citizens. The first book of John in the Bible says, "But if anyone has the world's goods and sees his brother in need, yet closes his heart against him, how does God's love abide in him?" How does God's love abide in us when we see our veterans fall through the cracks and we do nothing? How does God's love abide in us as citizens of this great nation when the legal system fails to consider veterans as a unique population with its own set of unique problems arising out of service to us, for us? Everyone has probably heard the statistics of 22 veterans taking their lives every day. In many cases, these are veterans who have not been honored after years of taking orders and submitting themselves to the will of other men in the pursuit of war and peace. An average enlistment is four years. That's four years wherein a service member sheds their right and ability to act freely and to make their own decisions. It's four years of brotherhood and sisterhood in exchange for that. And eventually, when those veterans return to the civilian world, they are asked to behave in just the opposite way. They are asked to make their own decisions. They are asked to succeed without the support and camaraderie of their brothers and sisters. The officers and commanders who once controlled every second of, every day for four years is no longer giving them orders or watching their back. Some of these veterans come from places that are already not supportive of them. They joined to escape a bad situation, and they served as honorably, us honorably within a structured environment. So it becomes necessary that we, as citizens, step up and fill those roles for them, provide the structure until they can find their own way in the civilian world. In 2009, during the 81st Legislature Senate Bill 1940 was passed, authorizing the creation of specialty courts for veterans in Texas. The bill took effect on September 1st, 2009, as Chapter 617 of the Texas Health and Safety Code. Veterans Courts are among several specialty or problem-solving courts, such as DWI or mental health courts. They're now being implemented across the country to provide a team-based approach to ensuring a person receives appropriate treatment for the underlying risk factors that can contribute to criminal behavior. In sum, it provided the statutory framework for filling our obligations to veterans under God and country. Veterans Courts work. There is no question about their efficacy. Brazos County makes no argument about the, Mr. Pattinson's comments. Makes no argument about the Veterans Courts adequacy for their intended purpose as promulgated by the state legislature. As of 2012, 11 active Veterans Courts programs served counties and their veterans in Texas. They all work well. They are all still in existence. This isn't an issue about efficacy. Instead, the findings by the Brazos County government focus on a false premise that there is not enough money to provide a Veterans Court. I heard you this morning. This was what I came in with. I understand that you're starting to understand that the grants are available. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie Perez, I'll jump right into it, okay? I love justice. I love justice. As a matter of fact, I got Daredevil tattooed right here on my chest. Okay, it's the only tattoo I got. All right? But you take justice and you separate it into two words, and you get just ICE, okay? Now, when the nation asked for us to step forward and do our part, they didn't ask for us to go to this, into discussion before we went overseas and we did what the nation needed us to do. 9/11. Okay, I was there. Okay, I know all about that. Then, I had my wife and my child. I had my career. Okay? Today, I'm basically nothing. I'm nothing. Okay? I'm nothing. Now, the intel community knows me as a advisor, basically, to, assistant advisor to the U.S. government, the French government, as well as the British government in the Russia-Ukraine going on right now. Okay? Assistant advisor, assistant intel collector, assistant hostage negotiator. Okay? But here, I'm, I'm.